And it's probably obvious to everyone here that we do have a quorum. I'd like to get started so we can maybe get home before my deadline and we can go forward from there. I want to start out by saying, if you were not aware, but this is a special town meeting and you are in the town of Northborough, Massachusetts. Like to start out with everyone that can, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask a member of the select board to please share with us their thoughts.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Mitch Cohen, I chair the Northborough Select Board. I want to take a brief moment to thank our outgoing town administrator, Tim McInerney, who has been with us for just a year, but has been tremendously helpful in preparing for the annual town meeting, for tonight's special town meeting, and many more things. He is making a little bit of a career change and I just want to thank him for his time helping us tonight. I know later, later tonight, we're going to be spending a lot of time with Fire Chief Dave Parenti. I want to be the first to wish him a happy birthday.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Gerald Hickman to please come up on the stage and be part of this process. Jerry has served as my deputy moderator since day one and, you know, we get to know each other's little ticks and ties and what have you, and he's done a fantastic job. So Jerry, welcome aboard. Jerry just reminded me that he's just a heartbeat away. Like to explain the large number of people that we have in the front row at the tables. We have the administration, we have town council, Brian Mazur, we have the select board, we have the financial planning committee, and then we also have the appropriations committee. They'll be adding their input from time to time this evening and hopefully we will have a smooth and rather pleasant meeting. With that being said, let's begin with Article One, appropriation for Sewer Enterprise Fund. Excuse me, I was just reminded that I jumped ahead. Before we do the article and the motion, I'd like to do a test vote or two with the electronic system. All of you should have received the little, as we refer to it, the clicker, clearly labeled yes, no. Okay? If we can try the first test question, please. Okay, people have already voted? Okay, we have, we're still moving. It looks like it slowed down now, so we have 497 votes. And will we see the breakdown? Okay, just a reminder that if your clicker has been not used for a little while, the first time you press the button turns it on and then you can vote your yes or no. Okay? You want to change your mind, you can change your mind. As long as the vote is still, voting is still open, you can change your mind and vote whichever way you choose. Let's try one more. I know there'll be some jokers here. Okay, we're at 516 votes. I think that's relatively most of the people that are here. Now, if several people get up and run out, then we'll know that they were at the wrong meeting. So everyone's comfortable with the clickers? Okay? Now I think we can begin with Article One, appropriation for Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for coming. I think this is a great number. I don't know if we've ever hit it before, but I'm Lisa Mazzelli, one of the selectmen, and I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $148,336 from the Sewer Enterprise free cash for the purpose of paying the city of Marlborough for its assessment to the town for its proportionate share of FY 2024's cost pursuant to the city and town's intermunicipal agreement governing the operation of the Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant located in the city of Marlborough.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Sharptier, Public Works Director. So this article has actually been broken up into two motions. This is the first regarding the last fiscal year's operating budget. So as indicated, the lawsuit between Northborough and Marlborough was settled, was settled just prior to the April annual town meeting. The result was that our FY 24 estimated assessment was short of what the actual assessment was. We didn't receive that assessment until the end of the fiscal year. The estimate was $148,336 short. Those funds will become out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund balance, so it's essentially the savings account for the Sew Division. There's no impact to the sewer rates nor to the taxes.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article One? Now, there are, there are actually two motions in Article One. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator. This is the first.
And why would we have two motions?
Article One is a prior fiscal year bill. It requires a nine-tenths majority vote. The second motion under Article One is increase in the assessment for the FY 25 budget, and that is a two-thirds or simple? Simple majority, thank you.
Yeah, how's everyone doing? It's His Royal Majesty, Michaelia Leonard and Associates. Grace and peace to everyone here. Just want to know what, what the assessment involves. Like, what's the point of paying for this assessment and what's the process behind such the assessment?
So the town of Northborough discharges all of our sanitary sewer waste to the city of Marlborough's wastewater treatment plant. The cost to operate that plant is shared between the city of Marlborough and town of Northborough. We pay our proportionate share of those costs. So out of every, let's say, 1,000 gallons that goes there, if 100 gallons is ours, we pay that one-tenth proportion. Generally, our, the ratio is about 27% to 63% between Marlborough and Northborough.
Okay, so this is going to pay an assessment for, for what though? For how much, like, what is the assessment for?
So Marlborough owns, operates, and maintains a sewer treatment plant. Our wastewater goes to that plant, and we're paying our cost to operate and maintain that plant based on how much flow we provided to them.
Okay, all right, I'll check into that. Thank you.
Any other discussion or debate on Article One and the first of two motions for Article One? Hearing none? This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $148,336 and zero cents from the Sewer Enterprise free cash for the purpose of paying the city of Marlborough for its assessment to the town for its proportionate share of FY 2024's cost pursuant to the city and the town's intermunicipal agreement governing the operation of the Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant located in the city of Marlborough. This requires a nine-tenths vote, okay? And thank goodness we have electronic voting. It will do the math for us. You may begin your vote. Oh, you already have begun your voting. Okay. Okay, I think we've got the votes and let's see the results. I think that's nine-tenths. Article One, motion one, has passed. I declare that Article One, motion one, has passed.
I move the town to vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 from the Sewer Enterprise free cash for the purpose of paying the city of Marlborough for its assessment to the town for its proportionate share of FY 2025's cost pursuant to the city and town's intermunicipal agreement governing the operation of the Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant located in the city of Marlborough.
Motion has been made and seconded. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is very similar to the FY 24 motion, except it's for FY 25. As indicated before, the intermunicipal agreement was reached just prior to the April town meeting, so we did not have accurate numbers on what the FY 24 assessment would be, in which case we ended up, I believe, estimating low on what the FY 25 would be. So we're requesting an additional $100,000 be appropriated out of the sewer savings account for FY 25's operating expenses associated with Marlborough's treatment plant.
Thank you. And do I have a recommendation from the select board on Article One, motion two?
The select board recommends approval of both motion one, which has already passed, and motion two of Article One. Thank you.
And may I hear from the appropriations committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the appropriations committee unanimously recommended approval of this article and motion.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on motion two from Article One? Hearing none, this is what we are voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 and zero cents from Sewer Enterprise free cash for the purpose of paying the city of Marlborough for its assessment to the town for its appropriate share of FY 2025's cost pursuant to the city and town's intermunicipal agreement governing the operation of the Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant located in the city of Marlborough. By the way, I didn't mention, but this is a simple majority vote. Okay, I think we have a vote. And motion two passes. Thank you. Article Two, Fire Station Building Project.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the amount of not to exceed $41,364,992 to engineer, design, improve, construct, furnish, and equip a new fire station to be located at 6165 West Main Street, Northborough, Mass. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Parentheses 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that no amount shall be borrowed or expended here under unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts necessary to repay the borrowing authority authorized by this vote from the limitation on property taxes set forth in Mass. General Laws 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Hello, good evening. My name's Tim McInerney. I'm the town administrator. And for the record, I was the first person to wish you a happy birthday today, just so everybody knows. 38 all over again. As you know, the town administrator under the town charter allows for the formation of a building committee, which the town administrator appointed way back when. I had the luxury of having a great committee working with the chief to figure out the best way forward. It's a public body. It has to adhere to open meeting law. They had many televised meetings and many outreaches that they've done. You will hear from a number of experts, architects, OPMs, the chief, staff. They'll talk about technical things. I hope they realize that tonight is not, even though the slide that I'm trying to show you is not about thanking the committee, it's about thanking this body, because none of these things along the way have happened without an appropriation of town meeting. So the checks and balances through all the committees that are listed behind me and all the people that are probably your neighbors, they've been diligent trying to balance the need of public safety against the need, the growth of the tax burden. So there has been a balance there, at least from what I've viewed in the past 10 months. And I can tell you without doubt that they have been diligent, thinking of all things and trying to remedy all problems. So with that, I do want to acknowledge the work of the boards and committees that are here, but I really want to thank the board for allowing me to be a town administrator for the past 10 months, and I appreciate the support you've all shown me since I've been here, and thank you very much.
No, I'm not going to tell you how old I am. Take a guess. No, I'm not going to. 50, I like that. I like that. So for those of you who don't know, I'm Dave Parenti, and the Fire Chief Emergency Management Director here for the town of Northborough. I want to speak to you tonight about why we need this fire station. And I'd like to start out with the fact that the physical and mental health of your firefighter and paramedics is incredibly important to me, and I'm sure to all of you. Number one cause of death in firefighters is cancer. Firefighters have a 9% greater chance of developing cancer and a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general public. For several reasons, one of them is we tend to run into buildings that we shouldn't be running into because they're on fire. And we kind of live in a garage, right? So that causes problems. Fire stations were never designed years ago to account for those things. We also have growth of our department. Just the other day, the select board voted unanimously to allow us to accept a grant for almost $3 million that'll bring our staffing to seven people per shift. That's great. I have two bedrooms with not a lot of room, no gender separation. And by the way, we just hired a female firefighter. In fact, she's over there somewhere. Hi, Heather. So it makes it kind of difficult when you have to put dividers up to try and make room. And we have one bathroom on the second floor. That's real comfortable. With one shower with two heads, so, yeah, a little tough. So those are all issues with staffing. Services that are provided by the fire service have changed just a little bit since I started back in the late 70s. And it's amazing the services we provide now, everything from, you know, fire, hazardous material response, emergency response, prevention, code enforcement, investigations, education, public outreach, training, emergency management, vehicle and equipment maintenance, just tons of things. Now, in 1974, when the station that we're living in now was designed, the Northborough Fire Department responded to 275 incidences. The ambulance division, which was a separate division, responded to 294 incidences for a total of 589. When I left the station to come here tonight, just before, I figured I'd take a look. Currently, we're up to 1,782. Last year, we topped out at about 2,500. And it keeps climbing. So our medical numbers are going up, we're living longer, we're living older, we're not necessarily living healthier, because all that medicine that keeps it going longer, that's great, but we end up taking a lot of people in. We do, about 68% of our calls are EMS calls. So keeps us very busy. So what's the solution to this, to our needs? Well, we designed the building following what's called the clean concept or the clean station. And when our architects get up here, they'll explain it a little bit more, but basically it talks about a hot, warm, and a cold zone. And the easiest way to explain it is we keep the dirty stuff in the dirty area, we have the transition section, and we keep the clean stuff in the clean area. When I started in the fire department, back when you all watched the movies and we took our turnout gear up and sat them next to the bed, jumped up in the middle of the night, that's, that's how I started. Doesn't leave the apparatus floor now, because that's where all the contaminants are. So that's not a good thing. So we did that, we looked at mental health, because the other thing besides cancer that kills firefighters is suicide. Mainly because the men and women in the fire service, just like the men and women in all first responders, the police departments, see things that we, that most normal people don't want to see and have to survive through that, and PTSD becomes a real issue with us. So we designed this station with that in mind. We also designed this station not for just today. We designed this station for today, for tomorrow, and for 50 years into the future. And it was based on needs, not on wants. From the very beginning, we, we, when I say we, I talked about the fire department and the fire station building committee, who's amazing, looked at this with fiscal responsibility in the forefront. Which people say, wow, well, the station's awful expensive. You looked at fiscal responsibility, why didn't you cut more? Because we didn't build in things to cut. We designed the station that we needed. Very important. So what does that mean? So this is currently our current conditions. You can see the apparatus is bumper to bumper. You can see that our kitchen, where we're trying to have five people cook dinner, isn't all that big. Our gym and our training room and our storage room and our meeting room are all the same room. And we have very tight quarters. So the station was built when there was only two people on duty and they only worked eight hours a day. Now we're going to have 28 people, seven shifts, 24, 7, 365. Station was built before the department offered ambulance services. We now have three ambulances that run significant amount of calls, plus all the equipment that goes with them, plus all the training equipment that goes with them, plus all the supplies. It was built to, it was built to house fire trucks from the 1970s, which were significantly smaller. Fire trucks are bigger now, they take up more room. That slows our response down when we have to drive and when we have to jump in between trucks to get to the other truck, so it makes it difficult. Built before the health hazards that I've already talked to you about. It was designed not to store our firefighter protective gear properly. So our gear that you can see on this slide is sitting right out in the UV lights. UV lights break down our turnout gear. A set of turnout gear is about four grand, 4,500. We want to take care of that. Couple reasons. Number one, it protects our lives. Number two, we want to be fiscally responsible for what we have. Sleeping quarters, restroom, showers, none of them have gender separation, which makes it difficult. And it also makes it difficult when COVID comes around and I have three or four firefighters sleeping in the same room and one person starts to sniffle and, oh my gosh. Because it went through, that causes that issue. Mechanic, mechanicals are getting there. This station was built in 74, occupied in 75, they're getting tired. And interesting, when the station was built, I have a letter from Chief Earl Pierce who says, "This station really isn't in the, isn't in the best location, but we'll take it because we need it." And I agree, it's not in the best location, because it wasn't thought about what's going to happen when we have to respond from there. So let me talk, show you what I'm talking about. So this one picture. Over here. That's how we currently respond. So you can see the trucks come out of here, traffic is queued up here, traffic is always queued up there. Anyone have to come through the intersection on a regular basis? Traffic is always queued up there. So where do we have to go? Oncoming traffic. Okay, so we have to go in oncoming traffic with the trucks, which is here, and then we have to try to turn the trucks if we're going west, which 52% of our calls are in District 2 that way. Very dangerous leaving that station for that. The new station, the apparatus base where we'll be responding from, start here, not on this end. They start here and go over. We have a great location to come out right onto Route 20, good line of sight, and we have a preemption system we'll be installing as part of our design. And what that does is, and you guys have seen when we're driving down the road and a little light goes on at the top of the, top of the lights, that's called a preemption system. What it does is reads a strobe on the front of the truck and says, oh, oh, there's a fire truck coming, or a police, or an ambulance, or whatever, turns our lights green, turns everyone else's red, and it dumps people from in front of us. This station will be set up the same way. So when we come out, it'll read the strobe, it'll dump people through Church Street, get them out of our way, turn everything So, that is a, and, and the reason I'm being brief on this is because we're giving you a ton of stuff, and if you haven't heard me already over the course of the last nine years telling you I want this, I'm surprised, because I talk a lot. And, uh, I want to be able to get on to the next thing. We're going to have, have Mr. Cohen come up and explain his things, his, his section, and we'll move forward. So thank you.
I want to talk for a couple of minutes about sort of the history and how we got here. Believe it or not, this project started almost 20 years ago, when in 2006, Town Meeting approved $75,000 for a feasibility study for a new fire station. That wasn't a lot of money then, it wasn't, certainly isn't a lot now, but we made it work, believe it or not, and I, and nobody really seems to know why, the feasibility project didn't start for 11 more years. So that's why the next jump on that slide is 2017. That's when the Fire Station Feasibility Study Committee, in a formal way, got started. We brought in an architect, it was the same architect that had done the library about 10 years earlier, and they had done a number of fire stations, and they walked us through the process of identifying the needs of the fire department, and they understood the, the safe zones that are required. You'll learn more about that in a little bit. And, uh, and we came up with, uh, the site that we wanted to have the station built. We looked at a number of different sites, again, you'll hear about some of those sites in a little while, but that was our process. And then we came back to Town Meeting, uh, in April of 2019, and, uh, and Town Meeting graciously approved $3.5 million to purchase the land, uh, that we're going to be building the station on, it's right across from Dunkin' Donuts. Many will remember that there was an abandoned gas station there, the old Pierce garage was abandoned for, again, nobody seems to know how long, maybe 25, 30, 35 years that it was empty. And, um, it was no longer in the, in the Pierce family, an investor overseas had bought it, was hoping to turn it around. Uh, no one bought it for years and years and years and years, but it was a perfect location for a fire station. Everything about fire stations and their location is based on response time. And this was just, you, we couldn't, we couldn't find a better station location. There were some, some challenges with the site, but we've dealt with them. So, 2019, again, Town Meeting approved the money to, uh, to buy the land and hire architects and get started with the design, and we had hoped that within a year, we'd be back before you and get approval on construction funding. Unfortunately, as I said, the, uh, the owner of the property was overseas, we sought to have them do the cleanup of the site, take down the buildings, it was a gas station, there was going to be some stuff in the ground, um, there was, they took care of that, but it took them four years to do it. And during that time, we had COVID, slowed everything down and made everything crazy, crazy expensive. So the construction inflation that took place over that four-year period was about 70%. And it unfortunately did make the project significantly more expensive. I wish we could go back in time and do it then, this is where we are now. So after the town finally took ownership of the land at the end of 2022, we formed a new Fire Station Building Committee to go ahead and, and get that started. The first thing we had to do was hire an OPM, an owner's project manager, that's someone that works on behalf of the town, dealing with the architect and the general contractor and some of the day-to-day things, required by law, it's a great, great law. We went back in time to find the right OPM. We hired the, the actual OPM, uh, Tim Alex from Colliers, who was the OPM on the Lincoln Street Elementary School project, which was done, which was our last town building project. Did a great job there, the project came in on time and under budget, so we hope to replicate that with his services. We decided to hire some new architects, it'd been long enough, we had to look again, and, and we were very lucky to, uh, to bring on HKT with, um, Amy and her staff, um, you'll be hearing from Amy in a little bit, have done a lot of fire stations, they really understand how to design and build fire stations that are safe, that are efficient, that don't cost an arm and a leg, and we're, we've been rea- really, really impressed with their work. After that process, we went through and we did the, continued on from feasibility, we did the schematic design, we had to do some updating because we had, you know, we, we eventually did the, uh, you know, everything we had to learn about the existing site, had to add a couple of things unfortunately as a result of that, but that's what we had to do, and, uh, then we got started. That was this slide right here, so it took us a while to do that, but we did it, we got multiple cost estimates along the way, uh, just to make sure we were as on track as we could be on track, and at each stage, we made decisions to, uh, to make adjustments where we felt we had to make adjustments without severely impacting the program. We want this to be an excellent operating fire station. Then it was time to go through the approval process. Uh, we sat before a number of boards and committees, the zoning board, the design review committee, conservation commission, and the planning board to each approve different aspects of the plan, which they did, thank you. Um, the Fire Station Building Committee approved the final cost after the last cost estimate at the end of August, and then it went before the financial planning committee, the appropriations committee, and finally the select board, all of whom have approved and recommended approval of this project. And now I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Spacy to talk about the site selection a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Wow, great turnout. This is great. Uh, my name's Neil Spacy, I'm the Deputy Fire Chief here for your fire department. Um, I'm going to go through a lot of the process from where Mitch left off to where we are today. Um, so first off, site selection, a lot of discussion out there about site discussion, how we got it. So there's a thing called NFPA 1710. This is National Fire Protection Agency, they set response, uh, criteria. So there's a standard, how fast a fire truck and an ambulance need to get from the fire station to the furthest point in the town that they respond to. So they set that standard. That standard helps each one of you by setting the ISO rating, which is the, basically a company that sets the fire rate, fire insurance rates. And what that does is, the better our response time is, it's one of the factors that translates into how they calculate the fire rate insurance, so it helps you out. So, what that standard did, this is working up there, yeah, okay, there we go. So that, let me get over here by the mic. This area right here in the outline, that's where the fire station needed to be to make, to meet the NFPA standards. Um, and I'll explain to you what other options we had, but they had to be in that area. So there was four options that the committee looked at, the feasibility committee from the beginning. They looked at renovating and expanding the existing fire station. Wouldn't make sense. After doing a lot of research on it logistically and cost-wise, it was prohibitive. Uh, we can get into, they had to buy extra land, you had to buy out businesses, the whole building would have had to been fully brought up to code, um, it wouldn't have addressed our response issues. So that, that idea was abandoned. Went on to a public safety building, okay, should we look at? Police, fire, put them together. The police chief at the time, it was not the police chief now, um, felt that there was no need. He said the operations of his police department at the time in the facility met the needs, the administration of the town at the time, again, different administrations, agreed, and so that was abandoned as well. Next was, okay, we need to build a new station, do we build one station or two stations? So we looked at the two-station idea. What we'd have to do is two smaller stations, but that comes with a cost of maintenance and staffing and apparatus. Because the way that we respond is, we don't have the luxury of having one firefighter assigned to a fire truck all the time, or one EMT assigned to an ambulance all the time. They do what's cross-staffing, which means the ambulance crew has to respond in the ladder truck when there's a fire, and the engine crew has to respond in the rescue truck when there's a car accident. So to spread out the staffing, we wouldn't be able to meet that without putting all that other apparatus and staffing in place. So that idea was abandoned. So then it became the station that you have before you. So once they figured that out, we had to find some land in that area, so they did what's called an RFI, a request for information. And there were some criteria that had to be met. It had to be met in the downtown zone that's listed, it had to be at least two and a half acres of developable land, had to have at least 400 feet of public frontage, it had to have no right-of-ways easements or restrictions, and it had to have access to public utilities. That went out advertised to everybody in that area that owns property. There was eight responses, only two of which met the criteria. One of which was Lincoln Street, near West Main Street, uh, which is that other arrow, it's pretty far out of the area we wanted to be, but it was in the zone, but there was a lot of pushback immediately from the public of that location because of the area that it's in. So we got to 61 through 65, West Main Street, which Mr. Cohen said, "It's an excellent property for the fire station." It is right dead set in the middle of that area, and our response times can be met. So let's talk about the site itself. The site, it meets the space and operational needs of the fire department. So if there's any question, the site, as it is, meets our needs. Mr. Cohen explained how there was a previous gas station there, and there was some contaminants that were detected. That was completely cleaned up at the cost burden on the seller. Following that, the property was completely mitigated of any detection. It was cleaned and tested, zero detections. And those detections were looked at by the EPA on the federal side, the DP on the state side, and our LSP, which is a licensed site professional, again, Mr. Cohen mentioned it, they work on our behalf. So it was somebody on our behalf looking to make sure that those numbers were correct. Again, zero. Even if there was an inkling, I can sit before you confidently, 1,000%, that your fire chief and me would never consider a parcel of property to build a fire station that would put your and our firefighters in a position to get sick. Never. But we're management, okay, maybe we make certain decisions. The firefighter union, they would never, ever allow it. And the union completely supports this project. One of the other benefits of the location too is jump-starting downtown revitalization. It's going to be a great-looking building, it's going to jump-start that town hall, it's going to be that, that entrance to the downtown area, hopefully bringing citizens in for that walking area, and hopefully attracting some businesses too. So let's talk about how we got the building now that we got the site. This is how the decisions were made for this project. Operational needs of the fire and EMS service, that was the number one thing, emergency and non-emergency. The health and safety of the occupants, the firefighters, the staffing, people that visit, you're all citizens, could come and visit us, and the people that come and do business with the fire department. The next was making sure that we beat the building codes and energy codes, they can be pretty stringent. And cost and tax impact, it's already been mentioned, it'll be mentioned a bunch of times today again, is that yes, while the building is expensive, fiscal responsibility was on the forefront. And if you go back and you watch some of the Fire Station Building Committee, uh, meetings on video, multiple times you will hear the statement, "We are the stewards of the people's money when making decisions." It was on the forefront. And not only that, we wanted to build, we wanted to maximize the investment, because that's what this is. This is an investment in the community. Investments including multi-use spaces, energy efficiency, and the useful life without further impact on the tax body of the members of the public. So, beyond the foreseeable future, won't have to add on to it, won't have to expand it, it's bonded out. When I talk about multiple spaces, it's been talked about, we have a training tower in the front, beautiful centerpiece, it looks really good, but it has operational needs. So we need a training tower, we want a training tower, we've got to train, there's certain things we need to do. But it wouldn't make sense just to spend money on a training tower. So how can we incorporate this? So that training tower that you see serves as egress to the second floor for the firefighters to get to the apparatus floor. It serves as our access to the roof. It serves as an area for us to hang and dry equipment and thaw equipment during the winter, and for firefighter training, multiple needs. There's a meeting training room as well, which is also emergency operations center. So it's emergency operations center, fire department training, fire department meetings. So, you know what, let's design it that the public can access it for different town meetings that they need be. The space is there, we're not going to use it all the time, let's maximize the space. And if you look to the side, this is how decisions were made in discussions. Everything was researched, designed, then it was evaluated, questioned, scrutinized, and believe you me, the boards in this town did a great job and scrutinized this project very well. We reevaluated that, then we made our decisions. So we're confident I can say that this building has been very well, the due diligence has been done very well in this building. Went out, we learned from others. All right, some of us build fire stations, some of us, so we went out to some of the other fire stations, a mix of fire station only, public safety buildings, fire, police, and mixes of fire departments that have more than one fire station. We only have one fire station. Not only did we tour and, you know, hey, that's great, that looks cool, I like that, but there was discussions, you know, what would you do again? What would you have done different? What would you have added? What would you have deleted? And what'd you learn through the process? And I need to look at the list because I want to make sure I get this correct. So their top ones were, we didn't design for enough growth, we're going to max out this building a lot sooner than we thought. We didn't design enough storage, we have stuff stored on the apparatus floor. We didn't pay attention to detail as much as we should have. We didn't delegate tasks to different people to do stuff, we tried to take it all, the fire chiefs in some communities tried to take it all on themselves. Quality of the appliances and the furniture, some didn't do so well and regret that. And the other one is that they, they felt that they didn't educate the public enough. And I hope, and I can confidently say for myself, but, that I'm just one person, that this community, out of all the communities that I've seen, has gone above and beyond providing each and you with transparency and education at every step of the way, videos, frequently asked questions, station meetings. I've never seen it before, and we have got multiple compliments from other departments across the state, who now wants to steal our videos, but we've trademarked them, so don't worry. Uh, programming phase real quick, and, and HKT will get more into this, but started out with a detailed survey, now that we've gotten some ideas, but what about Northborough Fire Department? What is Northborough? We know what, what these other communities did, and we've got some ideas, what does Northborough need? So they did a survey, it included every firefighter and staff member on the department, call members, our administrative assistants. It was like nine pages long, but really collected a lot of data. They collected data collection, they did specific measurements of things that we actually have. Future outlook, HKT has been doing this for a lot of long years, they've done a bunch of projects. They helped guide us through an exercise to figure out, what does 50 years from now really look like? Like, we can just imagine, but they stepped us through a process to reasonably figure out what we would need in 50 years. We went through a process of the required haves that we need, the must haves that we need, and the nice to haves, because obviously we, we would want some nice to haves. I will recommend this company over any company I've ever worked with on one simple thing, is that every single thing that we put in front of them that wasn't a basic design, they sat down with us and said, "Explain to me why you want that. Explain to me why you need that. Explain to me how that's going to work. Explain to me what you're thinking." It wasn't just, hey, we'll do it. They challenged, they pushed back. And many times, we looked at ourselves, the chief and I, and said, "That's kind of a stupid idea. Huh, glad they called us out on that." So, uh, very appreciative of that. And, and again, we talk about checks and balances, our own architects that we hired us were checking balancing us. Uh, that helped determine our space needs, it created that starting point and the foundation of what we needed, and then they went and did a site, uh, site survey of the property. Two things we learned real quick is that we needed a larger apparatus bay that was initially designed or determined, and the topography of the site, the hill and such, was a little bit different than what the public GIS data was, which the feasibility study had looked at. So let's talk about the site. So the topography, again, I don't think, I can guarantee you, anybody at these tables, anybody sitting in the audience, anybody that was unfortunately not be able to make it here today, wouldn't have done a retaining wall on the site if we didn't have to do it. We tried everything that we thought there was cost, within the cost, to not, to not do it. But, this is what mother nature gave us, this, she gave us this property, it's a great property, it works for us, we just had to manipulate it a little bit. Right? So the justifications, it was two big justifications- But this is what Mother Nature gave us, she gave us this property, it's a great property, it works for us, we just had to manipulate it a little bit. Right? So the justifications, there was two big justifications for it. One being the size of the building and the apparatus bay that I talked about. Because there were some code things that the feasibility study didn't include that created the size of the building's size. Also, we talked about safety, so the building had to be pushed back on the property. And that was to allow in the driveway in the front, as you can see up in... Is this thing working? All right, anyways, that big block up there. When the fire trucks come back, had it been in the original location, fire trucks would have come back, turn, firefighters would have to block all the traffic on Route 20 so that they can back back in. By moving the truck, by moving the building back, we don't have to interrupt traffic on Route 20 when we return. Decision-making process, and this is kind of a theme of the committee, a very professional committee, is the wall was based on cost, safety, environmental impact, and aesthetics. And we looked at all those and we balanced those out to come to a determination. We got to choose between a straight wall, a battered wall, terrace wall, all these different walls. And went with the batter wall concept. We talk about the height. You've all heard it, it's gonna be a tall wall. We've heard thirty feet, we've heard twenty-five feet, we've heard, I don't know, fifteen feet, whatever. It's gonna be tall, all right, we're gonna walk up to them and go, "Hey, it's a tall wall." But that's what Mother Nature said, you need a tall wall. So the thing to understand is that it's not one huge wall. There's one point in that wall that's the high point. And then it grades down pretty significantly. Most of that wall, you'll never see it. It's behind the fire station. You know, and unless you're flying a drone over the fire station, you're not gonna see it. But knowing that, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of people don't wanna look at it, we don't wanna look at it sometimes, so we did add trees, additional trees to kind of block the areas that you may see it. Let's talk about time spent. We've heard things of, you know, this project's been going on for twenty years, seven years. Anybody that says that, "Oh, there hasn't been enough time looking at this", I can show you this slide. The fire chief alone in the last year has put in above five hundred hours, just him. Not the committee members, not HKT, not myself, not the other firefighters, not the DBW doing research, not these boards. Just the fire chief alone, five hundred hours. And these are all the meetings in the last year that we've attended. All these boards, and this is where I say that this project, you can have confidence that due diligence has been done, because all these boards put eyes on it. That's multiple eyes with different visions, different requirements, different ideas, looking at the project. And as Chairman Cohen said, every board voted to approve it. Cost savings. So I put this on here because I figured at this point, people are like, "Oh, I'm getting tired." So that's the Taj Mahal, all right? And it's a joke in the fire service that no matter where anybody builds a fire station or a police station, or whether they're going to build it or they did build it, there's always gonna be the sentiment of the public that says, "Oh, they're gonna build the Taj Mahal," it's just, you know, it's always the thing, right? And we know it and it's funny, so we knew that from the start, right? We knew we weren't gonna be able to sell, you know, our own, you know, wish list of a place to work. And again, remember, it's the place we work. Really, how nice do we want it? So what we did is we started out with reasonable forward-thinking, right? The chief's already kind of hit on this. Through that detailed programming, we designed what we needed from the scratch, right? We figured, let's build or design a building that's reasonable, realistic, and achievable. We don't wanna go in front of the town with something that's not achievable, where we don't even feel comfortable like, "Well, I hope they don't catch that part of the building," so... And that's where we went to. And what that did is it reduced the potential for over-designing. And what does that mean? It means we didn't put a lot of fluff, as the chief mentioned. And when you put a lot of fluff, it loses your trust in us because we put things in there we didn't necessarily need. And then we have to spend time cutting things out and then the architects have to redesign because this is a whole building, each part works together, so we have to delete one thing, they have to do work. That's a lot of time, effort, and just nonsense. Not something we need to do. So we didn't wanna do that from the scratch. So that's why when the chief talks about, and there's questions of, "Well, you didn't cut a lot." Well, that was by design, we didn't wanna cut a lot. That's a waste. But we did cut. And we did cut quite a few things. And we reduced. So we talked about, we were gonna put some radio equipment on the tower, we deleted that. We were gonna put a radio tower, we deleted that. The heated apron right in front of the doors that melts the snow in the winter, we reduced it from twenty-five feet to ten feet. We reduced one of three of the monitors. We opted for folding garage versus roll-up garage. The folding doors are actually cheaper and have less maintenance, and they're faster. We created shared office spaces. We're looking at fifty years, the fire service is not just an emergency response agency. We do a lot of non-emergency operations, planning, hazmat, a slew of things that we have administration people and we can foresee that growing. Instead of creating an office for each one of those positions we foresight, we created a few and then the rest, we built a shared office, which is one space that can be manipulated. Shrink the footprint. We created double occupancy dorms. We foresee fourteen firefighters that this building can house in fifty years. Right now, we'll have seven. We developed seven dorms, everybody will have one dorm, and then when and if we get more in the future, we can double up. Again, shrink the footprint of the building, and that's where the cost is. We took the bathrooms, the original design had all full baths on the second floor. We split it up. We said, "We don't need all full baths, we can do some halves and some fulls." We went with sturdy residential appliances in lieu of commercial grade, and we could've gone commercial grade, much more expensive, way more maintenance, and it would've triggered us to have to follow the building code for a commercial kitchen, which puts you in a whole different environment that you don't wanna be in. But we definitely wanted stuff that was gonna last, because we don't wanna replace it every day. Because the replacement of a stove, I don't live in this town, it'd be nice if I did, but I don't live in this town, it's not gonna come out of my pocket. The stuff that we have to replace comes out of your pocket, so we don't wanna do that. We reduced the number of door locks. The back of the building is pretty plain Jane, no designing. Again, why? No one's gonna see it, so let's save some money. We eliminated at the recommendation of the boards, the electronic signboard, the wall we talked about. We also went a step further on the wall, not only, because as you make that wall shorter, the costs come down. So the chief and the town administrator talked to the owners of the property adjacent where Hillside Grill is and said, "Hey, you know, this hill here, would you mind if we lowered this a little bit on the grade? A little bit's on your property." But, and it was a verbal agreement of, "Yeah, because it cleans up his site and we lower our hill," so that wall came down a little bit. No cost. And we reduced the EV charges, as Mr. Cohen said, from eleven to six. I know my portion had a ton of information and I apologize if I overwhelmed you, but you deserve to know the information, even though we put a ton out there, so, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Dunlap, I'm a principal at HKT Architects. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get to the building design that we have today. So HKT Architects has been in business for about fifty years now. We have projects that are new construction, major additions and renovations. And we specialize in a number of different project types, including municipal public safety design, with about thirty public safety buildings currently completed and then several projects that are currently ongoing. The team that we put together, the design team that we put together for this project includes civil, structural, mechanical, and other engineers, landscape architects, cost estimators, and other design professionals who are experienced in public safety design and were chosen for their expertise and commitment to public architecture. This is a team with experience working on fire station projects just like yours with one another. I'm sorry, I went ahead one more slide. There we go. So Massachusetts requires that when a municipality hires an architect for a project like this, that they have to go through a qualifications-based process. And what that means is that there's a process where we have to submit a written proposal responding to requests for qualifications. That goes to, in this case, the Fire Station Building Committee, who was charged with evaluating candidates. They shortlisted some architecture firms and then those firms went for interviews and a formal presentation in front of the committee. When HKT was chosen and we started working with the town, we heard from the committee and the community how important it was that the new fire station design have a New England aesthetic and that it be a gateway to the downtown area. With that direction, we took quite a bit of time photographing the buildings in your town, taking a look at what the local context was and talking to the committee about how to incorporate a modern fire station design into a downtown streetscape while we responded to that local context. These were discussions that led to the building design that you're gonna see here tonight. Every project that we go through has standard design phases, which is schematic design, design development, construction documents. Throughout the design process, there were also numerous meetings where the project was presented to the committee and the community. We had regular Fire Station Building Committee meetings and then there were several open community information sessions and committee meetings where residents were updated on the project's process, as well as meetings before permitting authorities such as the design review, the planning board, the zoning board, where the project was presented and approved. Input from that process led to the design that we have tonight. So as Deputy Espisi said, our work on the project really began with program development. And that's when we established the space needs for a building, including the types of spaces that the building needs, their sizes, their locations, and their relationships to one another. He talked quite a bit about the survey that we did with the fire department. We started with a written questionnaire that went out to all of the fire department staff to learn more about their current operations and then what they envisioned going out into the future. We then sat with the department staff to talk to them about their responses. We toured their existing building and we learned firsthand about how they work and how their existing operations are impacted by their existing facilities. The goal of all that was to get a thorough understanding of how the Northborough Fire Department operates so that we could design a station that would meet the department's needs not only today but well into the future, as well as build a building that would give the firefighters a healthy, safe, and efficient workspace. Once the space needs were defined, we moved into schematic design where we developed several options for how those program spaces would fit into a building floor plan. And then we started to look at options for the exterior of the design. We worked with the committee and the fire department to revise those options until we had a scheme that met the operational needs of the department. And it was at this point that we had our first cost estimate done, right at the end of schematic design, by our professional cost estimator working with the HKT team. Following schematic design approval, we moved into design development. That's when we started looking closely at details such as HVAC systems, exterior and interior material types, and then other details. We're currently completing the construction documents package, which includes detailed drawings and specifications documenting the building design. Those documents will be used to solicit bids from general contractors following approval at town meeting and approval of the debt exclusion vote on election day. Once those go out to bid, we anticipate construction would begin in early 2025, following the bidding. As we move through design development and construction documents, we had two more estimates that were done, one at each of those phases. And at each of those points in time, we actually had two professional cost estimators preparing cost estimates. One of the cost estimators worked directly for HKT for the design team and then a second cost estimator worked with EOPM colliers and worked to create their own cost estimate. Those two estimators then get together and do a process that's called reconciliation. And that's when they start to talk about what they saw in the drawing set, what they're seeing in the market, making sure that their quantities align with one another, and making sure that they've accurately captured the scope of the project in their cost estimates. So the chief talked a bit about healthy design in fire stations and this is something that's really been an increasing focus, both in the firefighting community and in the design community, about how we can create stations that really focus on firefighter health, both physically and mentally. As he said, the firefighters are exposed to carcinogens from chemical release of burning materials in their work. And studies have shown that exposure puts them at greater risk of being diagnosed and dying from cancer than the general population. Similarly, there's an awareness about the need to address mental wellness for firefighters who can experience post-traumatic stress from their emergency response and what they encounter on the job, what they see as they're providing services to the public. Fire station design can help address both firefighter physical and mental health. By providing appropriate decontamination facilities, carcinogens can be removed from equipment, gear, and personnel. And by providing access to natural light, views, fresh air, and appropriate living quarters, the building can help support firefighter wellness. So clean station design is one of the biggest movements in fire station design in recent years and involves dividing the building into zones to allow the firefighters to return from a fire and go through the decontamination process before they move into living and administration quarters so that they don't bring any of those potential carcinogens with them into those spaces. And how those zones are applied in the Northborough building are shown in this slide right here. The red hot zones are the spaces occupied after a call and before decontamination happens. And then the yellow zone is sort of a transition zone and that includes spaces where equipment and gear can be washed and dried, as well as shower facilities where the firefighters can go and clean their bodies and make sure they don't carry any of those carcinogens any farther into the building. The red and yellow spaces are physically separated from the green cold zone where staff live and work. They're also pressurized by the HVAC system to reduce the likelihood of airborne contamination into the cold zone. So the goal of organizing the building into these zones, again, is to foster a healthy station design and to reduce the risk of any potential contamination of carcinogens into the living and working areas. Just like the interior building layout, the design of the site focused on fire department operations. As the deputy explained, the building was placed back from Main Street. It's about seventy-one feet from the roadway and that provides for the cleanest sightlines as the firefighters are leaving in the apparatus and they're moving out onto the apron and looking down Main Street. They have time to look down and make sure it's clear as they pull out onto Main Street. And then when they come back from the station, setting the building back provides adequate apron space so that the apparatus can pull in off of Main Street and back into the station without having to stop traffic. The apparatus bays are arranged with doors both out onto Main Street on the front of the station, and then there are apparatus bay doors on the rear of the station as well so that trucks can leave through either the front or the rear of the station. And the trucks leaving from the rear of the station are leaving through the staff parking area and they don't have to go through the public zones where the public would be parking and that was done again for safety reasons. There are snow melt systems located in the apron, both at the front of the station and the rear of the station, right at these doors. That helps with snow removal and helps with emergency response times during a storm event. And as the deputy explained, we do have a retaining wall around the building, at the back of the building and around the parking areas and that was really necessary in order to create the level area to accommodate the building, the apron, the parking, and all the other required site elements. So the first floor plan of the station supports the clean station concept, again, with the hot, transition, and cold zones. The color coding here really represents the different functional areas of the station. The blue color on the plans represent the public areas of the building, including the lobby and access into that multipurpose space the deputy was talking about, which will be a multipurpose Emergency Operations Center, training room, and meeting room. The purple areas represent the administration spaces, which are staff offices, conference rooms, storage and copy rooms. And then the reddish areas are operation spaces. The apparatus bays are the largest of those areas you see here and those have folding bay doors in the front and back of the station so that the apparatus can leave in both directions. Other operation spaces include decontamination spaces, gear storage spaces, medical supply storage spaces, and working spaces for the firefighters. Within those operation zones, there are opportunities for hands-on training, including repelling tie-off points and the hose and training tower that the deputy was talking about, where the firefighters can practice pulling hose and they can practice response activities on stairs. The gray areas represent building support spaces such as mechanical, electrical rooms, stairs, and elevators. stairs, and elevators. In the early design development phase, the HVAC engineer presented what's called a lifecycle cost analysis of various heating and cooling systems, and that was presented to the committee so that we could choose what system that we would use in this building. The lifecycle cost basically looks at the upfront installation costs for these systems, as well as the long-term utility costs and long-term operations costs for replacing things like filters and pumps over the life of the building. And it looks 40 to 50 years out, what the overall cost of the building would be over that lifetime. And it was through that process that the committee opted for a geothermal system with radiant heat in the apparatus bays. This is the second floor plan, and this is devoted mostly to the fire department living quarters, including dorm rooms with lockers for their bedding and personal items, toilet and shower rooms, a kitchen and day room where they can eat and gather together. There's also a fitness room for exercising, and there are two roof decks, one off the fitness room and one off the day room. It gives them a place for eating outside and a place to have a connection to the outside, which promotes mental health benefits. The second floor also has some mechanical spaces, and there's a fire pole so that the firefighters can have easy access to get down into the apparatus bays in the event of a This is a 3D rendering showing what the fire station will look like from West Main Street. The station, again, was designed with consideration of traditional New England brick architecture. Materials including brick masonry and standing seam slope metal roofs were selected to be durable and minimize maintenance concerns over the life of the building. The red brick color was selected to complement the color of other buildings in town, and then a contrasting colored brick is used as an accent to create interest at the main entrance, at horizontal bands that wrap around the building, and at the arches marking the public entrance and the apparatus bay doors. A clock is featured at the top of the training and hose tower to add visual interest. So when you're looking at the cost to build a fire station, one of the things that's important to remember is, or to understand, is the impact that building codes can have on the cost. The International Building Code governs this building design, and the IBC divides buildings up into risk categories when it's looking at structural systems, and that's depending on their usage. Different risk categories have different structural requirements. Fire stations are categorized as essential facilities, and they fall into what's known as Risk Category 4, which is the highest of the risk categories. Essential facilities are buildings that need to stay in continuous operation in the event of an emergency, such as a hurricane or an earthquake. They're buildings that if they experienced a failure would impact the availability of providing essential services to the community. And as a result, buildings in Risk Category 4 have more stringent seismic requirements than commercial buildings might have, and that in turn leads to added cost for a building like this. We also have a new energy code in Massachusetts that went into effect this year, and that has been also contributing to added construction cost in projects. The goal of the new code is to increase energy efficiency in buildings and to encourage a movement away from fossil fuel use in HVAC systems. The new code has emphasized thermally efficient building envelope, and it requires that you do energy modeling for a building of this type to determine compliance with the code. And that's really had a big impact on the types of materials and the types of detailing that we do for buildings like this. The insulation of walls has increased, and the attachments that we used for attaching that insulation to the walls needs to be designed in a way to minimize thermal conductivity. And the size and type of windows are impacted by the code's thermal requirements, and for this building, we were required to do triple glazed windows to meet the code requirements. Mechanical systems for this building are all electric, and there will be no natural gas lines brought to this building. The code requires the building to be solar ready so that if in the future you want to put PV panels on the roof, you can do that. The structure will be designed to carry that weight, and there'll be infrastructure in place to make that happen. And the code also requires that a percentage of the parking spaces that we provide need to be electric vehicle charger ready. This building actually is going above and beyond the code at the request of some permitting authorities in town. We're actually providing six charger stations that will go into the design from day one, and then there'll be some additional spaces that will be ready for charger stations in the future. So all of these code requirements have cost impacts for a building like this.
Thanks, Amy. I want to talk a little bit about energy systems and some rebates that we're getting on some systems. A primary goal during any construction project is to, these days, is to reduce the use of fossil fuels, and whether that's of an environmental concern or a financial concern, it's a good thing to do. I'm hearing some conversation on the back. Can everyone hear me all right? Thank you. Okay. The, I want to talk first about two relatively smaller items that Amy mentioned a minute ago. Solar panels, we are required by the energy code, as you just heard about, to be solar ready. We do plan on installing solar panels on the roof towards the end of the project. We wait intentionally until the project is further along to make sure we're in good shape with budget and everything else. But under federal law that was approved about two years ago, we'll get 25.5% back on that. We anticipate that to be about $75,000, $80,000 that we'll be receiving back. Also, the energy code, as you just heard, requires the use of prepping for 11 EV charging stations, really to charge 11 cars. We're installing charging capacity for six, and the reason is, is that the state has a rebate program for providing up to $50,000 in a rebate. That happens to be the cost of six chargers, so we're getting those for net for free. If they get used a lot, we can always install more. Two of them will be installed for the employees' use towards the back of the building, and four cars will be able to be charged in the public charging area. And we'll work out, we get questions about, well, can someone come in at 3:00 in the morning and charge their car for free? We'll sort those things out. I want to talk particularly about the geothermal heating system and cooling system that we're putting into this building. Geothermal is really the pinnacle of energy efficiency and reducing the use of fossil fuels. Pleased to say there are no use of fossil fuels in this building at all. In the back of the building, there's an emergency generator that will have fossil fuels, of course. Other than that, there's nothing in the building whatsoever. Geothermal systems make use of a number of wells that can cool or heat the liquid, whatever the liquid is that's going into them or coming out of them. Many in here may be familiar with the geothermal system that we have at the senior center that's using an older style of geothermal that isn't used anymore called open loop. In an open-loop geothermal system, water from the wells is actually pulled up and pulled through the pumps. As anyone who has ever had a well knows, you get some sediment with that. Eventually, that sediment clogs the pipes and clogs the pumps and everything else and causes some trouble, which has definitely happened at the senior center. Nobody builds those anymore. What we're building with this project is a closed-loop geothermal system, so it also has a number of wells, but there are pipes that go down, filled with an antifreeze-type material that never enters the ground, and the sediment and the water from the well never comes into the building through those pipes. As such, there's no sediment to clog the pipes or clog the pumps or anything like that. It's incredibly energy efficient. It is also expensive. So until very recently, it was not something that towns did many projects with geothermal because of their cost. But about two years ago, the federal government passed a law, with bipartisan support thankfully, that provided tax incentives, essentially they are technically tax incentives, to tax-exempt municipalities, which of course we are. So for the first time ever, we're eligible for some significant federal money for this system that more than makes up for the cost difference. The least expensive HVAC system we looked at was about $2.5 million for the whole building. Geothermal was 4.2, but we get $900,000 back from the state and almost 1.1 back from the federal government. We're rounding that down a little bit to $1.9 million that we'll be getting back. And the nice thing about this, it comes in quickly. So we do not have to do long-term borrowing on that $1.9 million that we'll be getting back. And so that's an immediate savings to the town. So the $41 million and change that is being appropriated has to include that $1.9 million, but as you'll learn from our finance director in a few minutes, we're not bonding, we're not borrowing on the entire $41 million. Thank you very much, and I'd like to ask...
Moderator?
It's up to the moderator.
Okay, I was going to wait until the presentation was over, and then we could have discussion and questions.
Is it over?
No, there's more.
Let me say something. I thought this was a...
Well, if you could come up to the microphone, then.
I apologize for interrupting, but I thought this was a public meeting tonight, and my idea of a public meeting, I guess, is a little different than some of you. And I was hoping that the residents here would have more time to ask you some questions and make some comments, and I do want to hear from members of the Board of Selectmen speak tonight. I was kind of hoping we wouldn't have to go through a full-blown summary again of the fire station proposal.
Well, the plan is that there'll be a presentation that we're going through now. After the presentation...
What's that?
After the presentation has been completed, then I will ask for the input from the various boards, committees, and commissions. Then we will have questions and answers.
Well, you know, we're supposed to have a certain amount of time for each speaker. This is taking up the majority of the time, and that means...
Well, sir, actually, we are doing it pretty much the way we've always done town meetings in town.
I know.
Okay? So if we could let them finish, then we can get to where you want to be.
How many more speakers? I'd like to...
Let's move on with the presentation. Who's next? Who's next in the presentation?
I'd like to introduce Tim Alex, our project manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. So I'll try and be brief. I know that it's a long night. So my name is Tim Alex. I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. We're the owner's project managers for the project. As was discussed, any public project using public funds of over $1.5 million requires, by state law, an owner's project manager. So our role in this is to coordinate the different members of the team. We're independent of the contractors, we're independent of the architects, and we coordinate the efforts of all the team members and try and get the project through its process. We focus on the cost, quality, and schedule of the project, keep things moving, and we'll talk a little bit about the process that we've been going through with our budget So Amy covered a lot of this earlier, so I'll go through pretty quickly, but the estimating process, what I really want to focus on here is that it starts early on in the design process and continues as the design develops, and that we're looking at not just the cost of the project, but the scope. So as two independent estimators, one, again, hired by the design team, and one brought on through the town, through the OPM, start to look at the costs, we want to make sure that they're looking at the same scope, that they're interpreting the drawings that are presented at that time the same way. So assuming that they're looking at it, as we go through and do the reconciliation process, we'll identify where the numbers might be a little further apart, maybe there was some confusion on what the scope is. By going through that process, hopefully, in the end, all the bidders on bid day are looking at the same documents and interpreting it the same way, and our costs are relatively tight. It also allows us to take a look at major driving factors of the cost of the project. By doing that, it allows us to review those particular items, whether it's the envelope of the building, the material, whether it's brick or some other sort of material that wraps the building, and we can determine what really provides the best value for the Again, the estimators are looking at the construction documents, so that's really what we refer to as the hard cost. So really, what's being provided by the contractor as they bid on the project. There's a lot of other costs that make up the total project budget, and those are referred to as soft costs. And some of those include the architect's fees, OPM fees, you have moving companies, testing companies, legal fees, furniture fixtures and equipment. Also, there's a contingency line item within the budget. That's for the unknowns during construction. One thing that's important to mention is that as a fire department can't have downtime in between their moving from their old facility to the new, we need to make sure that the budget incorporates all those items. So that the IT infrastructure, the administrative equipment, the furniture, all those things is turnkey-ready when they move into the new building. So that's part of our, again, as the OPM, as the coordinating, we'll start to get involved and hire movers and make sure all those pieces and parts come together on time. So talk about the budget, the full budget. So the hard cost, which is really what the estimator's been working with, the total construction cost, $33.4 million. Again, other parts of the budget include the furnishing fixtures and equipment, just over $900,000 is what we're carrying. Fees and expenses, just above $6.8 million, and then a contingency of 5% of $3.7 million, for a total of $41.3 million.
Yes.
Please.
Is the chief in the hall? Chief, if you could address that.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, it's being handled. Please let it happen, okay? Jason, if you could.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jason Little. I'm the town's finance director. I'm here now to talk about some of the financial factors surrounding this article, including its impacts. So first of all, and let me just warn you upfront, I only have five slides, so this is going to go quick. So the fire station article, as you can read from the motion, is contingent on a debt exclusion ballot election vote. The town's financial policies, which were adopted by the select board in 2010, that have been in place for a long time, that we've adhered to year after year, they require that any large project be conducted as a debt exclusion. And why would we do that? For two good reasons. Those two reasons are demonstrates the community's support, it's the largest project the town's undertaken at this significance, and also intergenerational equity. And what that means is that this building is likely going to be used for 50-plus years, and the town will incur debt for a period of about 30 years. So this means that the residents and taxpayers that are enjoying this building will pay for that in increments over that period of time. The second part of that is it retains budget capacity for the operating budget within the limits of Proposition 2.5, so all of the town's departments will be able to continue being funded year after year. If the ballot question passes on November 5th, the finance team will immediately begin working with a financial advisor to when best to issue debt, when would be most advantageous to the town, to receive the majority of the funds before the end of the fiscal year in June. So one other point here that's important with the town's financial policies is its bond rating. The town was rated by Moody's, it was upgraded to AA1 in 2015. That was upheld in 2021 when we refunded debt. That was the last time we've issued long-term debt. So we're in a good position to issue debt for the next round. So we have two policies that we need to consider with respect to debt. One is state statute. It's General Law 44, Section 10. So we're limited to 5% of the town's EQV. That's equalized valuation, that's basically the town's property value in total, as adjusted by the state and measured by the state. And that debt limit for us would be $3.6 billion times 5%, so that would be a limit of $182 million. Right now, the town's total outstanding debt is $21 million, so we're not close to encroaching upon that. is $21 million, so we're not close to encroaching upon that threshold. So the other policy to consider is the local policy adopted within the town's financial policies by the Select Board in 2000. The policy considers the town's general fund debt plus the regional schools debt compared to the general fund budget. So that limit is the net general fund debt limit. It's not to exceed 8% to 10%. So for FY '25, this calculation was 3.83 for our existing debt. If $3 million was added to that, which is projected to be the high year of borrowing the money for this project, that would bring that limit to 7.58%. So we're within our local policy limits. And so I just briefly wanted to go through how these numbers are derived and what the tax impact is gonna be on the average single-family home. So we're projecting a rate of 4.25%. And again, I wanna point out that the intent here is to demonstrate a high watermark. So hopefully, some factors will come in that will lead these numbers to be lower, but we wanna provide the highest possible watermark for these debt issues. So a rate of 4.25% is estimated for a 30-year tax-exempt bond on $39,464,992, and what that is, is this authorization less the $1.9 million in federal-state energy rebates that are expected to be received. So how that breaks down is $39 million divided by 30 years. $1.3 million will be due for 30 years, plus interest. This is the high year, so it's the full balance of $39 million times 4.25. That adds another $1.6 million. So the amount due in FY '26, if we borrow this full amount, would be $2,992,762. So that would be divided by the town's tax base, which is $4.5 billion. That's the total valuation, assessed value of all the real property in town. So then dividing that number amounts to a tax rate. 66 cents would be added to the tax rate as a result of this. Apply that to the single-family home, which is projected to go to $669,000 in FY '26. That would amount to $441 being added to the tax bill. So subsequent years have declining debt, so the average across the 30 years would only be $321, because the 441 would decline down to $202 in FY 2055. So there are some variables. We don't know what the interest rate is till we go out to bid to the tax-exempt market. So it's estimated high. What if it's 1% less than 4.25%? Well, it amounts to, across 30 years, approximately a total of 10% difference. So in the highest year that we just modeled, it would be about $58 less than that $441. So what would the effect be if we borrowed $1 million less than the maximum amount that we're talking about tonight? Well, that would be about a 2.5% difference across the life of this debt, or about $11 from the $441 estimate. And lastly, this is really ugly, but this is what 30 years of a debt schedule looks like, and it shows it declining from the $3 million in '26 down to just basically the principal payment in 2055. And that concludes my presentation. Thanks for your attention.
I applaud Jason, 'cause when we practiced this, his was the longest section. That was awesome. And I will say, I know this has taken a long time. All right, no one's to blame but myself. I put this together. We felt we really had the responsibility on a project this big to give you the information. I apologize it's taken so long, but we're just trying to do our due diligence and get the information out for you. This is one question that we actually get. It has nothing to do with this project, but we got a lot of questions on this, so we wanted to just hit it real quick. But the current fire station, when this new fire station passes and gets built at 11 Pierce Street, the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Downtown Revitalization Committees are super excited about the opportunities for this building. Tons of opportunities. It's in that walking-town-town mindset. Whether the town keeps it, sells it, leases it, everything's on the table with them. But it's important to know that we have plenty of time, because for the time for the station, the new station will take about a year, a year and a half, maybe two years to build max. So the fire department has to maintain residency at 11 Pierce Street. So that'll give at least probably about two years for everybody in this room to provide their input on what they want it to be, and the Master Plan and Downtown Plan Committees to figure what they wanna do on that. So if you want more information on that, Episode 16, and also you can talk to the planning boards.
Final comments?
I know you've all been wondering, 63? Wow, that's a whole lot of information. I don't know. If you could absorb it all, I've been absorbing it for a while, so I got it all, but it's a lot. We talked about the history, the timeline, the justifications, the components, why, et cetera, et cetera. It's been pretty crazy. But now it's my turn to talk and close this out. So nine years ago, just shy of nine years ago, I was sworn in as a fire chief. I was fortunate enough to become the fire chief of amazing town and amazing department. And I've always followed these three mantras, these things that are very important to me. Number one is to ensure the highest level of services is provided to the citizens and the business owners in the town of Northburn. I think we've done that. Number two is to be fiscally responsible, understanding that my budget, your fire department's budget, is your money. It's our job to be fiscally aware of that and conservative and keep that in mind. And the third mantra is to do everything possible in my power to ensure that every single firefighter/paramedic of the Northborough Fire Department has a long and safe career. They're healthy. They can go home to their family at the end of their shifts, and that they can have a long, healthy retirement. So I wanna leave you with these important thoughts. What we're asking you to do is an investment in yourself, in the community, in your firefighter/paramedics, in the protection of the apparatus that every year when I come to town meeting and I say, "Can you spend $900,000 on a new engine?" And this group says, "Sure." We need to protect it. We need to put it inside. We need to keep it where it's safe. We have stuff that sits outside because we don't have room for it. It's based on our needs. It's designed to meet the operational needs, focused on responsibility from the start, and I can't stress that enough. The goal wasn't to have too much to cut. As I've said, the deputy said, "We wanted to make the station, design the station for what we needed, not what we wanted." Designed to serve the community for 50 years without age, any major cost, 'cause if we have to come back to you in 10 years, it's gonna cost a whole heck of a lot more to put on and a little bit more than if we build what we need now. Makes a lot more sense. We accommodate for growth. We accommodate for the staffing, the services that we need to provide, the apparatus, the equipment. And I don't know, I've been in the fire service since 1978, and when I started, I didn't have to deal with people's icky, bloody stuff, and now I do. I didn't have to deal with hazardous material. I didn't have to deal with terrorism. I didn't have to deal with many things that we now deal with. So I don't know what the next 50 years is gonna bring, but we did our best to design something for you. Most importantly, this provides the environment that supports the physical and mental health of the men and women serving this community today and for many years to come. I'm gonna thank you for your time, and now I'm gonna invite Donna. Oh, I gotta give him one more picture. Yeah, hang on. There we go. Thank you.
You'll all be glad to know that I'm not here to talk. I'm just gonna be here to kind of filter out the questions and call up the right person to answer your questions. So that being said, questions?
I would like recommendations from the Select Board on Article 2.
The Northborough Select Board recommends approval of this article. Three in favor, two opposed.
May I hear from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. And from the Financial Planning Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee by a majority recommends approval of this warrant article.
Thank you. Now, what everyone's been waiting for. Let's have some questions and discussions, and hopefully some answers as well. Please use the microphones so that everyone can hear you, and give your name and your address before you ask your question.
My name is Robert Entwistle, 173 South Street. I have a few questions to help me make a decision. What happens if there are overruns to this project?
Jason? Tim?
So as I mentioned before, we have a contingency line item within our budget. It's about $3.7 million. So as things come up, maybe unknown conditions or different items that may come up that make cost additional funds, they would be taken from contingency. So a contractor would bid on the project when it goes out to bid, and that'll be their all-in cost, except for maybe some change orders that happen along the way. It would be unusual for other costs to come up that would be above that 5%. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but that would be unusual.
What happens if it does?
So from the OPM standpoint, he wanted to talk about how the budget was. So just to understand that, you know, like any other town project, what the town votes to spend is all we get to spend. If this building comes in over budget, we can't just spend the over budget. We would have to make adjustments. But because of the detailed programming and all the cost estimates, we don't feel to be there. The best way to look at what you're voting on is not a cost. You're voting on a budget, meaning that if we build the building cheaper, we don't spend it. If the building's over, we can't spend it. So you can be confident that there won't be any cost overruns without having to come back to the town, and we do not expect that.
But you could come back to the town for more money?
Anything's possible, but I can tell you that with the amount of detail that's been put in, it's very, unless unforeseen pandemic.
Was there any votes against this bond proposal? And if there was, what was the rationale?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Was there any votes against this bond proposal?
Against the proposal, by who?
By anybody, but I heard two people from the Select Board-
I can't speak for the committees. That's something that the committees would have to address.
There was two people from the Select Board that voted no. I'd like to hear their rationale. Maybe they see something that we don't see?
Can the chair respond to that?
Out of the, you have six member on each of your boards, correct? So out of the 17 members of the Select Board, Appropriations Committee, and Financial Planning Committee three voted in opposition. All others voted in favor.
What was the rationale for the opposition?
They were expressed during those meetings, which were public and recorded.
Can you share with us today?
I can't, no. Once a board takes a vote, that's the position of the board.
Are the people here that voted no? Can we hear why they voted no?
If they wanted to step down from the board and speak as individuals, they can do that.
Are they here today?
They are.
Can we hear from them?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to them. It's not up to me.
I mean, if they would like to.
Use a microphone, please.
Meaning go up.
Microphone.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get more input, why somebody may vote no.
Julianne, I'd appreciate if you used one of the audience microphones, 'cause you'd be speaking as an individual.
But I have a question for you first. What do you mean step down from the board?
Meaning not speak on behalf of the board, not speak from up here as a board member.
Okay, so everyone's clear. My name is Julianne Hirsch, 19 Smith Road. I voted not to have the Select Board approve this project because I think that it is a very large building on a lot that we are trying to retrofit desperately to make it fit there, and that was my primary reason. There are other things that I've heard tonight that maybe you haven't really heard details, such as the project is $40 million, but in the end, it's almost $27 million in interest. Is that correct? And I would just say, for those of you who are trying to visualize this building on this lot, I've counted those rows of cinder blocks, and there's about 30 there, and I believe that they are probably 12 inches wide. Would one of the architects confirm that? Are those about 12 inches wide? Eight inches. Y. So we have eight. It's about 30 times eight inches. So that wall is gonna be taller than this wall? Okay, so that's my reason. So I don't know if my counterpart wants to-
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate some comments on that. In 2019, the town meeting in this room approved spending $1.5 million to buy that land. That's where the fire station should go. I wish we didn't need a retaining wall. No one likes the retaining wall. If we had any way to do it any differently, we would have. We need the wall to get the fire station where it should be. If we had known in 2019 that we'd need a retaining wall, we absolutely positively would have gone forward with the same site. This is the right place. There's no other place to put it in that downtown area that Neil showed earlier. It's this or build two stations at Ops, at Ends of Towns. This is where it needs to go. Thanks.
So to respond to Ms. Hirsch, you know, everybody has their personal views, and, right, some people like the wall, some people don't like the wall, the size of the building. The size of the building is what it is. We programmed it, and we built the building we need. Whether it's there or someone else, that's the size of the building. But as the fire chief and I both said, and through the design board, is this site meets our needs, you know? And right now, if you look at that property, and there's been some people that have looked at the property with stakes, is you can't visualize what that building's gonna look like on that property. Right now, there's hills, there's trees that would be moved. You can't see the whole scope of the property. So it definitely is a big building. We won't deny that, but it's the building that we've designed, and that site will fit and meets that building. Is there another question on that, Donna, if you wanna come back up? Well, I wanna just address if there's any other questions specific to what we're on. Anything?
Well, excuse me, sir. Sir, may I say that you've asked several questions. I wanna give other people a chance to ask questions.
I just have two more. Is that possible?
What is the yelling about?
Just two more? Okay.
No, you exceeded the allotted time for this go-round. If we have other people that have asked their questions, you can come back up and ask another question.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
There's a quick question.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Chris Woodcock, Increase Ward Drive. I am generally well in favor of this project. I think it's something that's necessary and important for this town, and I would like to thank all of those committees and members who made presentations tonight. It was incredibly informative. There was a lot behind it. I know it was time-consuming, but this is a lot of money, and I think it's well worth everybody's time to have heard that. The one thing I'm a little disappointed in not hearing is more about the benefits of this for the town of Northborough and the people of North- let, is this on? The fire chief mentioned the ISO rating. That's the Insurance Service Office's rating. It goes to how are rates that we pay for home- It goes to how are rates that we pay for homeowners insurance, fire insurance, go in the town? And the better the rating, the lower the insurances. Now, it's been quite some time, probably decades, since I've worked with this a lot. But the rating from the ISO used to be part water department, forty fifty percent, part emergency response, about ten percent. And I think the fire department of that rating is forty to fifty of the hundred points. My question is this. What is the fire department rating? How many of those forty or fifty points do we have now? Where did we lose points? And will building this new fire station increase that value so that it might lower our insurance costs, perhaps even exceeding what we're paying in increased taxes? Thank you.
Thank you. All great questions. So, the ISO rates communities on a one through 10 scale, you're either a Class One department, which is Los Angeles, or you're a Class 10 department. And then they rate it based on rural versus or water, where you have water supply, where you don't. Northborough is currently a what's called a three three Y. So, we're not a one, we're not a two, but we're a three, which is pretty darn good. Where have we lost points? Some points have been lost on dispatch. Some points are, we do pretty good on the apparatus we have. We will do much better with the new grant with the people we have. That's going to help a lot, and we need to have places to put those people. And that's what this station will give us.
Over here, please. Let her turn the mic on first. On her end. There we go.
Wow. Good evening. Kathleen Howland on School Street. And looking at the fire stations of Natick and Wellesley, of which I'm familiar with, they have second stories. They have built up and not have such a massive floor plan for this project, which would seem if it went up, would be less eco-destructive and requiring such a massive wall if there was another space and wondering about the options for building up and not flat out. Thank you.
When we were in the schematic design phase, we did look at different options, plan options that we talked about. And one of the schemes we looked at was possibly putting spaces over the apparatus space. We, when we looked at them with the fire department, the Chief may want to weigh in on this too. There were operations sacrifices that needed to be made in order to do that, which he can talk about. But there are certain spaces that have to be on the first floor. We had to have lobby spaces. We have to have stairs. We have to have elevators. We had to have that training, EOC, meeting room component on the first floor. And so, when we did the overall scheme, we found that we weren't actually decreasing the overall impact on the site of that building. When you put together the overall footprint of the building that fit on the site, and then the parking that fit on the site, and all the other site elements that needed to be there, it wasn't a really great savings of space, but it was a big impact on the operations in order to do that. And Chief, you want to talk about those a little bit? I don't remember.
Yeah, I think it was. So, operationally, it led to some issues as far as the flow of firefighters from from their from their living quarters, their interaction with admin, how they get down to the fire station. It just how they get down to the apparatus bay was not a a good flow. There was also some concern with cost because from what I what I recall, it was slightly more expensive to actually go up. There was no cost savings to get to do that way. So, that was considered as well.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Armon Arabi from Two Scott Lane. First of all, thank you for everybody's effort putting this together. It was very informative. Couple of quick questions. There was a comment made about the the site have been some contaminant on site, and it's been cleaned up. Are there any plans to further test during the construction? And who would bear the cost of any additional contaminant that they might find?
Yes, and us, and it's built into the budget. So, when I said it zero, and I think the deputy spoke to, we we had to do six test pits for our drainage. Those test pits were dug to a depth of at least eight feet on all different locations on that site, and they all tested as zero across the board.
Who paid for that cost?
That was part of our that was that was part of the $3.5 million of the money that was approved at the twenty at the 2019?
2019.
Town meeting?
So, the previous-
Right, that was that was that was part of the construction, but while they were there, they tested it.
The previous owner of the property?
No, the previous owner paid for the cleanup. That was all. So, when when they when they drafted the purchase and sales, they were very careful and said that the owner had to deliver us a clean site. That included removal of the buildings because we have to pay prevailing wage to tear him down. He didn't. That included cleaning the site if anything was found. He found some stuff underneath one of the buildings that was torn down, the garage itself. He was responsible for paying for all the costs for remediation at that point.
But he would not necessarily be responsible for any additional costs for remediation?
Correct.
The other question that I have is that the old fire fire building, firehouse on Church Street? That was abandoned or decommissioned as of late seventies or mid seventies. It sat there for about fifty years, and recently was sold for probably as a gift. Is the plan to do the same with the current fire department? Or is the plan to liquidate that asset and take the profit and apply it toward the new project?
Okay, the deputy can speak to that because he was actually looking into that.
Yeah, and another reason why we wanted to hit on it. Like I said, the two committees that are involved in downtown revitalization, which I don't believe were in sight in seventy five, seventy four. So, I would ask you, if you go to our website where it has the videos and stuff, episode sixteen has our Planning Director and the Master Plan and Station Committee Chair discussing all the different options. So, they have renderings and such. So, from what they've presented, it doesn't foresee that the building would fall into disrepair and abandonment like the other one unfortunately did.
Yeah, my question was, what's the benefit for the town to retain that building?
Oh, you'd have to look. They they have a bunch of different options. You know, I'll just hit them quit. Like, they could keep it. It could be recreation. It could become, you know, it could become an art studio. There's a whole, they have a ton of, I think Lori went on for twenty minutes of all these different options. And and like I said, there'll be two years, so they'll be able to weigh like, okay, do we keep it at this cost or we get rid of it at this cost? But it definitely won't sit there and disrepair because it's too valuable of a property to the town.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, sir, you've been waiting, so you can go next.
Dan Field, 288 Howard Street. Two issues. First is, I noticed you put a slide pole in the design. Is that safe? I've heard they've been phased out.
So. I like poles because that's what I grew up with. What can I say? It's cool. You slide down, you got one hand, you got a big cigarette. Well, that was a long time ago.
Right.
They've done a couple of things, actually. So, they've they've looked at poles. They've also looked at running down the stairs at two o'clock in the morning, half awake. They've also put slides in. They did these really cool curlicue slides, and then these other slides. It's much safer going down a pole when you're trained properly to do it as opposed to trying to run down the stairs in the middle of the night after you've just gotten up.
Okay, I've heard. I've seen articles about broken ankles or collarbones.
It's oh, without question, I can. I tell you a great story about a guy that slid down a pole using a paper towel, but you don't want to hear the results of that.
Okay, the second question is, there's a lot of asphalt around this building and a tall retaining wall in the back. What's the snow removal plan? Or is there space for it?
Yeah, great. And and actually, we we the design changed. It was adapted when we looked at snow removal plan. Originally, all the parking for the firefighters were on this was on the side of the building. It was moved around the back to give us additional space on the side for storage. There's a pass-through on the back where we can move the gate where DPW can drive through. And I've had extensive talks with our Public Works Director on whether or not is there any concerns with snow removal there? And Scott, if you want to speak to it, but I don't think we've had any issues, right?
Thank you. Over here, please.
Hi, Carter Brandon, 22 Sherlin Drive. I remember over the the years of this kind of happening, I mean, my kind of always hesitation about the location has been the it's right on the hill. We've seen kind of the other construction happening along that hill that was building all of these large retaining walls, and not sure if that's really the the best thing to happen. I understand that this this site was the one that was chosen a few years ago, and they're they're working with the best that they can. The the on on one of the videos that was posted, it was mentioned that if this fails, the really only other option would be to re-present the exact same plan next year. And I was just wondering if, given the kind of retaining wall is an issue that I've raised and a few other people have raised, if it would be possible even if the the bank next to this site were to be purchased by the town and the fire station shifted by that. It appears that that land is flatter and would reduce the need for as large a retaining wall. There are issues with that, I understand, but in the event that this does not pass tonight, could that be explored?
So, again, as I mentioned before, this station was designed for what we needed, not, you know, for what we wanted, what we needed. It's designed for health, safety, and operations. Any changes or any delay, any changes will delay. So, if it gets voted on no, then we have to come back next year. Any money we've put into it, which right now is 3.5, that goes away, except for the land. You can't simply delete and change. It's it's very complicated. The whole building, the building's built as a whole complex. So, I can't tell you what it what buying the land next to it, if it was for sale, if the bank chose to sell it because they don't have to sell it. I can't tell you what impact on cost that would have. I wish I could. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's more of just a, in the event that this does fail, could would other options be explored?
We would have to, the committee would have to get back together and have a discussion and see what we how we want to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
That's a fair question.
Over here, please.
Hello, Adrian Eben, Six Jethro Peters Lane. And I don't think there's anyone here that's going to argue against the fact that we need a new fire station. It's desperately needed in this town. The question that I didn't see answered in the presentation is when I'm quoting anything for work, when I'm shopping for a home, when I'm shopping for a car, I'm looking at comparable models. And the research, whether it's accurate or not, that I've done with other towns, we are at least two to four times the cost of many towns' budgets for their fire stations with comparable-sized populations. So, if you look at Summersworth, New Hampshire, 12,000 people, $9 million cost for their fire station. Woburn has a population of 50,000 and has tore down two fire stations. That was $19 million. Dennis Mas, 15,000 residents, $15 million. Tewksbury, which was brought up earlier today, 30,000 residents and $15.8 million. So, I keep hearing this was designed to what was needed. Why does Northborough need so much more than every one of these other towns?
So, we're prepared because-
All built in the last five years.
So, so-
You, please, answer the question.
All right, so, great question, not not what we would ask ourselves, all right? So, first thing to remember when you're talking about fire stations, first thing is, it's impossible to compare two fire stations. And when I say that is that each town is unique, each fire station has services are unique, each needs of the community are unique. You take a place like Tewksbury you mentioned, they have multiple fire stations, so they don't have to build one station for everything. They have multiple stations. You know, so when you talk about it was a cost for this, you have to multiply it by the other stations that they have built. Same with a bunch of the other communities as well. We only have this one central fire station. If you're talking out of state, there's prevailing wage laws in Massachusetts, and if I can have Scott talk more about it if need, but agree or disagree with it, I'll hold my own opinions on prevailing wage, but it's what we have for a law. Other states may have it, but it significantly impacts the cost of a municipal project, unfortunately. So, that's out of state. You can't really compare the two projects. And then I apologize, I was trying to get the right answers for you. What was the other ones?
Dennis Mas, I believe that was a singular fire station.
Dennis Mas has three fire stations. Yep, they had they did their headquarters multiple years ago. This was their substation, and actually, it was a substation that they relocated because that area of town, the population really grew on that side. It's on the Mayflower Beach side, so the bayside.
Thank you. Thank you. Over here, please.
William Rodriguez, 76 Bartlett Street. I'm curious, we have like commercials like Amazon and Lowe's and Lyman Street, Cedar Street, and around all those areas. What's their contribution to this project, if they're even contributing?
Please.
One of the tax figures in front of me, I know Amazon pays about $2 million a year in in property taxes. I'm not sure of the others. We may we may have some other folks with us that might have that question. I mean, they don't, they would be paying their fair share based on their their property value and their lease arrangements and everything else, and we've got a great assessors department that makes sure they do.
And my other question is, we also have like possibly other projects in the future, like City Hall and probably even like increase the police station sizes. How's that going to work out with like the further tax increasing with us?
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yeah, we we have a, right now, under our financial policies, we have a six-year capital plan, which model maps out what we're going to, major projects we're going to do within the next six years. That's that's by our financial policies. Over the summer, we did what was called a financial summit, and if you look on the town's webpage, you see some of the financial condition overall of the town. You can you can look at that. It maps out on a on a further basis, some of these projects that are coming down the road. So, we do look at that in the future, and we make sure that our projects that we're undertaking are going to stay within the town's financial policies of that eight to 10% of of the budget.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Hi, Mike Shaka, 120 Maynard Street. I speak today, first, thank you for all the presentations and all the hard work that went into this. I'm the son of a firefighter who served in Natick for about 35 years. I strongly support a new fire station. However, I am saddened and frustrated in having strong reservations and concerns over this particular project. Now, it was just mentioned a moment ago that it's impossible to compare two fire stations. What about 44? Data compiled in January of 2024 by Mitchell Associates Architects on 44 stations constructed in Massachusetts, New York, and Connecticut showed an average construction cost of four of $734 per square foot. Keep in mind that this quadrant of the country is already approximately three times the national average per square foot. The pricing we're looking at for this project is $1,400 a square foot, almost double that of the other projects in New York, Connecticut, and Rhode Island, and Massachusetts, and seven times that of the national average. I am all for a new firehouse, but things just simply don't add up. There were examples that were provided, and I'm happy to go into detail about them as well. Recent projects, these are all recent projects. This is a report from 2024.
Could you tell me when they were bid?
Sure, sure. Well, I think-
Because I have numbers I can give you as well, sir.
Sure, sure. The Tewksbury Station, I believe, is still under construction. If Amy could correct me, is that right? It's still under construction and it's-
No, it's completed.
Okay, well, if you, when was it completed? Okay, well, if you, when was it completed?
Uh, it's under construction in 2020 or 2021.
Okay, well, it still shows is under construction, but either way, it was $15.8 million for 24,000 square feet, and that's for a population of 30,000. I do recognize that they have another station. There's Millbury, which just completed in July, a 22,500-square-foot station with six bays, that's a hub station. That was $799 per square foot. Natick, 2021, 647 per square foot. Brunswick, just completed, 332. Granted, it's up in Maine, so it's going to be cheaper.
Let me answer some of your questions. Millbury's an all-volunteer station, okay?
It doesn't affect the building.
It certainly does, when you don't have to put dorm rooms in, it certainly does. Cost that we have for current projects, because I think you need to look at that. Charlton, Mass., $1,440 a square foot. Bedford, Mass., $1,520 a square foot. Rockland, Mass., $1,443 a square foot. Sanford, Maine, since you wanted to mention Maine, $1,465 a square foot. Newburyport, which has three stations, $1,308 a square foot. We are in line with everyone else that is currently bidding stations. You really need to look, because it's really critical. You can't look at a station that was bid in '20, in '19, in '21. You have to look at the stations that are being bid now and look at the cost of what they are.
Can we look at cost indexes on that point then? Because Mortison, a multi-billion-dollar American construction company, has data that was just released that shows that while there was a 40% increase since 2019 to present day, right now, the increases are approximately 1% to 2% in the current year. So that means that that Natick example of $12.3 million, adding 40% would be roughly $17 million, a long way off from our 41 million.
And again, as we mentioned, Natick has multiple stations.
They do, they do, but we're speaking about square footage. The thing that is really of concern here is the potential negative effects to property tax and the increases. So I noticed there's a lot of people that are a little bit older than me, and you know what? There's fixed incomes, there's decreased affordability, there's displacement of long-term residents, there's investor hesitation in the town. You know, when your taxes go up and you go to apply for a loan, there's only so much money in the till. So if you can't afford the taxes, then the amount that you can pay on the house goes down, so property values decrease. So these are all considerations that we as taxpayers have to consider. I am all for a new fire station, but it needs to be reasonable, and it needs to be at a price point that's in line with the other 44 projects that had taken place in recent years.
Thank you.
You know, it is, there has been tremendous escalation over the years, so making sure that we have, as the chief said, a, projects that are currently in design, or at least comparable to where we are is important. You know, we did bring in two independent estimators to review this. You know, that's what they do, that's all they do. We don't do internal estimating because you really need to understand the market. So somebody who's working in Western Mass., even though it's Massachusetts, it's a different market than it is here. You know, if they're up in Maine, it's a different market. You have to have somebody and people who understand the current market, current conditions. And so that's all we can do is go on their record, their track record of estimates and making sure that we're using the best information we have available and we can. We can't necessarily rely on an architecture firm that's presenting information across New England or across multiple states.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Campbell, 284 Whitney. In the last town meeting, we approved purchase of property at the top of Whitney and also out by Route 20. There was some discussion in one of the earlier meetings about mutual aid and how the current site survey, or the current selected site didn't provide for mutual aid with our neighbors. I would strongly recommend that the select board revisit the idea of multiple stations. I think that where the current workload is 70% EMS, it's a little disingenuous to speak of cancer rates and fire and the need for these complicated, these complicated floor plans and one floor plan for all of these services.
I can speak to that.
I'd like to finish.
We've had multiple firefighters that are currently on duty, that are currently working, who have been diagnosed with cancer, so you can speak to them.
I agree 100% we need a new fire station. I think we need multiple fire stations. I think we need to provide for smaller, a smaller central fire station that will not have some of these aesthetic concerns that have been raised, that won't have the budgetary concerns that are raised, and that we have property that is well-suited and well-positioned for mutual aid, for long-term operational costs, that the city, that the town has already agreed to purchase. Can we please revisit some of these things? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, as we did in our presentation, sir, I'll respond to you directly.
Is that a question?
As we talked about in this review. This committee didn't just jump on this property and didn't look at anything else. There's requirements that we have to meet, there's response requirements that we have to meet, and there's impacts of multiple stations. And I know that you're looking at it, but this committee has truly dived into the details and researched it. It doesn't need to be researched, they have researched it already. And I would ask that you have confidence in the people that have been put in positions on your behalf, both citizens and experts, that they have done their diligence for the betterment of the town, because they've done a great job and put a lot of effort into it.
Over here, please.
Thank you. Pat McManus, 25 Fernbrook Road. Full disclosure, I'm a captain on the fire department. I also represent the 20 career members, thanks to the members of the Board of Selectmen, who unanimously supported about to be 28 career members of the Northborough Fire Department. And with respect to the cancer conversation, I've been on the job for 24 years. Six members, since I've started, have been diagnosed with occupational cancer and respiratory-related injuries. We are two and a half times greater in getting diagnosed with cancer. Not using that as a scare tactic, I can assure you, because I worked with one of these individuals on opposite weeks while he was going through chemotherapy. And he's still on the job today. There's nothing disingenuous about talking about cancer and firefighters. This building that we're in right now is harboring it, and I'm not trying to say that to force the vote. What I'm trying to explain to you is, the building that we're in, it isn't because we're going into building fires every day like the guys in the 70s, like the chief, the guys in the 70s and the 60s were. The gear we're wearing has recently been proven to carry PFAS and cause testicular Now we wear that, we wear it back to the station, we take it off and we hang it on a hook next to a truck that's been emitting diesel fuel for 50 years. Recently, we got a diesel exhaust removal system that was at least 20 years overdue. But I assure you, the cancer risk is very, very real. Yes, we do a lot of EMS. But the cancer risk is no joke to us. There was a conversation made, I mean, there was a comment made in the past at another board meeting, that the current site is a brownfield, that has been proven false. I would not stand up here as a union president representing all these members right here and say with 100% conviction that 6165 Main Street is correct for us. I would not dare put one of my members on that property if there was any chance of it being a cancer site.
Jeff Anderson, 260 Green Street. You know, when I came here tonight, I was all prepared to talk about the need, the suitability of the site, all sorts of other things. You know, I thought the presentation that was done by the chief and everyone else, I think laid that out better than any of us could. And I think one of the takeaways that I got from that discussion is that we have taken the very best. We've hired experts, whether it's architects or other folks who are expert in this field. And we've heard a few people here that second-guess them. You know, I'd love to know the qualifications for those people, you know. Who knows better about a wall? An architect or somebody that doesn't like the look of it? You know, I don't like the look of a wall either, but this site is what we have. And I think, you know, to sit there and start nickel-and-diming, you know, this proposal because we don't like a wall, or, you know, for whatever other reason, you know, if we have a concrete reason, say it. But, you know, then we talk about the cost. Everybody knows that this is going to be expensive. It's a lot of money. But the one thing I can guarantee is that if we wait, it's going to cost even more. I'm a person that happens to like data. I looked today and see, you know, what the average is for the increase in construction costs on an annual basis. It's about 5.28%, and supposedly it's larger in the Boston area. That's an annual rate. If you look at this project at, you know, $40 million or $41 million, that means if we do nothing, no changes, and we wait a year, that's another $2.25 million. That's a lot of money, just for sitting there and kicking the can down the road. You know, and I haven't heard one person get up here and say how they would, you know, what they would eliminate from this project, you know? I'm sure these folks would love to hear that. You know, give us a concrete idea. You know, nobody has had one. You know, the current fire department was built 50 years ago. That's a long time. Believe it or not, I was in high school then. Since that time, what has the town of Northborough done? They basically built or renovated every single school in this town. You know, Peaslee, Zee, Proctor, Melican, Lincoln Street, all of them. Albonquin, this building. The town made the investment to improve the infrastructure and do what was right for the kids in this town. We built a new senior center to take care of the folks that are older. We renovated the library. We've built parks, Ellsworth, McAfee Park, the Aspen Park. All of this we've done in the last 50 years. What haven't we done? We haven't taken care of our firefighters. And it's time we did.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fran Backstrand, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Just real quick, we can't guarantee that there would be cost savings if we kick the can down the road, is that correct? There's no guarantee that we could save any money? Right? We could, I guess I would like someone to just timeline for the people who may still be undecided, since cost seems to be the most important factor. What the next steps would be if we do not do this now? We spent $3.5 million-plus to date. If we kept the land and tried to build something smaller to minimize the cost and view of the wall, would we eventually have to spend the same amount of money and get less? I mean, we heard 70% increase in cost because of COVID, God forbid another COVID, but costs are going to go up to some degree. And I do want to just say real quick, thank you to those of you who were in 1974, were here, that purchased the fire station that we have appreciated for the past 50 years, and I am more than willing to pay for one moving forward that's going to be here beyond my lifetime.
Amen.
The best answer I can give to that is our cost estimators that were referred to us, the two, the one that works for the town and the one that works for the architect, indicated a 7% to 10% increase. Now, could that be 3%? I imagine it could be. Could it be 10%? I don't know what the economy's going to do. We can only go off of what we're told, and that's the estimate that we've been giving. Operationally, delaying and trying to build a smaller station is not going to work. It just isn't. We don't have the room we need now, and if we don't build what we need, we're going to be coming back to you in five years saying, hey, we need to put an addition on. And that will be at the higher rate. So now's the time to do it.
Over here, please.
Doug Stone, 33 Birch Hill Road, Northborough. Mr. Moderator, could I sneak down front and use the mic and better address our residents for about two minutes?
There isn't really just the one at the podium. You can't do it from there?
Mr. Moderator, we don't allow the public to use that microphone.
I can't hear what you said.
Um, well, um, yeah, good evening. As the son of a former call firefighter, I recognize and appreciate the sacrifice firefighters make. While I am not against a new fire station, I have three points I would like to share for your consideration. The first is safety. I'm not sure if residents know how our fire department operates. According to my recent discussion with our chief, firefighters begin their day around 7:00 AM and work for 24 hours. I asked him if that was safe, to expect a firefighter to perform well after being on duty for 23 hours in icy conditions, for example. He said the crews love the 24-hour shifts. But that doesn't stand to reason that working very long hours, especially in a dangerous firefighting profession, is when mistakes are more likely to happen. Mistakes that can result in injuries to our firefighters, as well as the people they are trying to help. I suggested to the chief that 12-hour shifts might be safer and better for our crews, as well as providing residents with a quicker response time, which brings me to my second point. Quite simply, if there is a fire, whether it's one per year or 100, every second saved in response to a call may make the difference in saving a life. So isn't it better for both residents and firefighters to have crews 100% ready to perform, instead of crews needing first to be awakened? In short, we don't have our policemen working 24-hour shifts. Why should our firefighters be working 24 hours with the added necessity for us to provide them living quarters? And that makes me, brings me to my last point, our budget. If we eliminate some 9,000 square feet of living quarters, we can build the station within a more reasonable budget. I'd rather see budget funds to retain the eight additional firefighters we just approved through a temporary grant, rather than spending a huge sum on bricks and mortars to house them. Let's reconsider the scope of this project, as we have several more costly projects in the pipeline. Thank you.
Just to respond, if you had finished our conversation, when I explained to you that going to 12-hour shifts greatly increases the number of people you have to have on duty. Okay? You can't run four, right now we run four shifts, 24 hours on, 48 off, 24 on, 96 off. Going to 12 on, 12 off greatly increases the number of people and therefore is not very fiscally conservative.
Thank you. Right over here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. William Pierce, 367 Whitney Street. Just for reference, I'm speaking as a citizen, but I am a member of the planning board. I'm also the chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee and former chairman of the Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee. In those roles, one of the things I have learned is that I am not an expert. And so I know to go to the experts, to the architects, to the people who do this work day in and day out. To the person that mentioned about the, about what might happen to the, if our current fire station is going to end up like the old one. This board here convened a Town Hall feasibility study that not only included what might be our new town hall many years from now, but also disposition of the current buildings, including 11 Pierce Street. So I would invite you to go over and go onto YouTube and actually watch those videos. We actually go through a lot of detail about that. But my main point here, oh, and to the gentleman who was talking about doing multiple buildings, that ship has... to the gentleman who was talking about doing multiple buildings, that ship has sailed. We bought this property. We're building on this property. We don't want to have to sell another property that the town owns. So, again, I'm not an expert. So I rely on experts. I, when we were doing the Town Hall feasibility study, one of the architects brought up that construction costs have gone way up due to inflation after COVID-19. So I did a little research. Prior to 2020, and this is from a project that was done in Westwood, but they actually went out and, and pulled all of these numbers from all these different towns. Prior to 2020, the average escalation rate of construction costs was plus or minus 3%. In 2020, with COVID, that was at 1%. 2021, that went to 5%. 2022, 14%. 2023, 7%. So if anyone thinks that if we don't vote for this now and get this approved now, that this cost is going to come down, think about those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
John Rappa, 105 Weston Terrace, speaking as a private citizen. The views I'm going to express are my own, not of any committee or board. Growing up as a kid outside New York City, my father was a firefighter for 40 years. I was a firehouse rat. I certainly understand the environments that we're talking about here and what these people go through. And they see and live through unspeakable things. Now, I don't like the price tag of this, of this, but we have to do this. I'm looking at the fact that my house has an assessed value of just over $700,000, assessed, not market value. So what does that translate into? $10 a week. $520 for the first year and declining from then. $10 a week. If your house is assessed at $1 million, it's $13 a week. So do, do without a nice bottle of wine, a couple of beers, a couple of lattes, for this mission-critical, purpose-built building. Now, people are talking about this site and moving, doing something else. Forget about the fact that we own the site. It was $1,487. $2 million would be flushed down the toilet for the money spent on the design, the site analysis, the site surveys, and everything else. $2 million bucks, gone. And then you reset the clock and you're subject to increased costs. It tick, it is pay it now or pay it later. We need this. Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Charles Francien. I live at 125 Howard Street. I was lucky enough to be asked to serve on the interview board that has hired our new firefighter. Maybe I'll be lucky enough to interview some more firefighters down the road. I serve on the personnel board. And I've also got many, many years of human resource experience in municipalities. Let me tell you right now, I did not, I have not been inside the fire department in many years. When the chief asked me to come to see him to talk about the interview process, I was shocked at the size, or the lack of size, of his office. I was shocked when we actually went into the interview room, that it was, it had more gym equipment than room for a table. This building that they work out of is ridiculous. It's out of date. It doesn't work anymore. We keep buying fire equipment because the old fire equipment wears out. And guess what? The fire equipment gets bigger. Even if it's an ambulance, they get bigger. So let's take a look at what they've come up with. They've come up with a plan, and all the experts that you've heard forever tonight has told you, this is what we need. You all know this great old word. It's called inflation. You just heard the last speaker. If we sit around yet again and stick our finger in our ear and say, eh, maybe next year. We're going to build the same damn thing for a hell of a lot more money than what we're going to do today. It's enough. Let's get it done and move on.
Yes, please.
Susan Banghart, 61 Deacon Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to please call the vote.
Point of order? I can't hear you.
Point of order?
Your point of order is?
Our rules say that any speaker who wants to speak has the right to speak on the main motion.
No, if, only if the moderator recognizes them.
I asked to be recognized to speak on the main motion.
I, I, I could, there's a motion on the floor right now. What, you're?
Miss, ma, Mr. Moderator, with, with respect, I'm, I'm making a point of order. A point of order takes precedent over any other motion. Thank you, sir. I'm making a point of order with respect, and I don't mean to offend anyone here, but I sat here for 80 minutes of presentations, which were very well-done, by those who are proponents of the motion, which is a very substantial cost today. And then, in, in response to every single comment, including a gentleman who had a 30-second question of wanting to hear the select board members who voted no, and instead, we heard responses for five minutes of why those were wrong points. And, and I don't believe that the people who have, because I was going to make a, a comment, I was just waiting for the line to, to lighten up and see if, if you other people were making comments. But I, I don't believe that we have done the, what our charter says we should do to give a fair opportunity for everyone who wants to speak on the motion. Now, I have a comment to make. My point of order is, I think that we have violated our charter by giving 80 minutes of presentation when we only have a 15-minute limit for that, and then now saying we're going to cut off discussion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. So the point of order has been made. We still have a motion on the floor. And I have a second to, to, to move the question.
I have a discussion point on the motion to move the question.
So we are now, we've had the motion to move the question. It's been seconded. We will vote on that motion and see where we stand on that. Two-thirds, okay? So while we're setting up the question?
I have something to say. I just wanted to say.
We are voting, I'm sorry, I'll use the microphone. We are voting on moving the question. Okay? We're not voting on any of the, the Article II just yet. We're voting on moving the question.
Point of clarification, Mr. Moderator. So if the question is moved, do I understand correctly that we're basically cutting off the speech ability of those in the town who want to say something at this meeting? Do I have that correct? We're limiting speech essentially?
That's your perspective. I think what we've done is we've given everyone an opportunity to come to the microphone and ask the question.
Okay. So we're cutting off speech. Thank you.
Your words, not mine. Ready? Okay, we're ready. And let me, let's. If anyone continues to yell, I will ask the constables to be able to ask you to leave the hall. I don't want to have to do that. Okay? Let's be polite to one another. Okay. The, what we're voting on is moving the question, and the voting is open now. So please. Okay, it looks like the voting has at least slowed down significantly. So could we see the results? So it, I declare it passes by the required two-thirds votes. So that allows us to move to the motion for Article II. And to remind you what we're voting on, I move the town appropriate the amount not to exceed $41,364,992 to engineer, design, improve, and construct, furnish, and equip a new fire station building to be located at 61-65 West Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts. And to that, and to beat that appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to have issued bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that no amounts shall be borrowed or extended, expended hereunder unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts necessary to repay the borrowing authorized by this vote from the limitation on property taxes set forth in general law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2. May we open the voting now, please? And this is a two-thirds vote. Okay, can we open the results? Okay. I declare that Article II has passed by the required two-thirds votes. Is there a second? Motion to dissolve has been seconded. This meeting is dissolved. Thank you.